We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand, face our flag, and join us when we take the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we've had any additions to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda at all? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
So moved.
Moved by Anna, second.
By Brenda.
Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Schedule presenters, we have none this evening. Reports and communication. Anna, what do you have for us? It's been a busy few days, huh?
Yeah, well, the boys' basketball team won their HBL game. Sounds really good. And a lot of spring sports actually started today, including track, baseball, just to name a few, pretty sure. And speech won second overall last weekend at You Lucky Dog in the Cities. So it was a good competition for us. The robotics team just got back after their competition dilute and placed 13th overall out of 65 teams. So they were one place away from making finals. But a really good thing that our school did this week was our blood drive. And we got quite a few pints for that.
Tell me about the speech. How many, uh, how many teams were at?
Well, it varies every weekend. This one was a bit harder because we are a single A school. Today are double A's. We faced against a few bigger schools. We were looking at over 20 teams last weekend, so almost 500 people.
Anything else for us?
Passionate.
Alright, thank you. School board committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause?
Um, We Tech met last month and it was just our organizational meeting, but Aaron, the director's contract is up in June, so they asked for volunteers for negotiating committee. So I'm doing that tomorrow night.
Busy week.
And then we'll have another, um, our next meeting is April 18th.
Um, just a reminder that GCE, um, the all county board meeting is coming up and it is on March 27th at 5:30 PM. There's dinner served with that, so in wrapping.
Can I just add to Anna's a little bit? I know I sent it out to the group, but kind of worth noting for everyone, last year with We Tech was the first year we've actually profited. Uh, so we were having classes through ITV. We actually had more students taking them than were, than coming in and taking those classes. So I think that's a really good sign for our district. Um, it's a profit of about $8,000, but it's still something in the plus. And I think that's really worth noting that other schools are liking the classes we're offering. The kids are liking the teachers that are teaching those classes. And hats off to Tim for creating an environment that that's a comfortable thing to go to because not all kids want to go to a classroom and take an ITV class. And he's had to revamp the room several different times and thanks today for moving those things around. But, um, when you start making small profits like that, that could easily be $16,000 next year and $20,000 that next year. If you get a good rap on having good classes, those, those can continue. So I just, it may steal your thunder on that, but, um, worth noting that, you know, it was the first year it's been really profitable for us, so that's good.
Is this our administrative?
It is, yes.
Week, okay. Elementary school. I just saw you pop in.
Right. Okay, uh, just a shout out to our literacy team and the elementary and their partnership with the Cannon Falls Library for our author night event. We also had the author speak during the day. So just thank you to those people. I know that that is extra, above and beyond, and just, I know it takes a little bit of time away from family to make some of those events happen, so I appreciate it. Uh, thank you to the PTO and the teachers that helped with our PTO carnival, uh, at the end of February. That was a great success. Um, thank you to Ms. Braun for a wonderful fifth grade music performance. We do have first and second grade coming up March 28th. Conferences are coming up, uh, March 19th and 21st. The, the signup is out for that and we are still continuing to do the online signup and that is working out well. And then our fourth grade goes to Eagle Bluff, uh, April 1st through the 3rd. So yeah.
Okay. Tim, you have anything for us?
Uh, just a little bit. Um, a couple of reminders. Our juniors will be taking the ACT on April 2nd. Um, the, the district is required to offer that, either the ACT or the SAT during the day. And, um, you know, thankfully, most of our students go ahead and, and take advantage of that, um, when we do that testing. Along with testing, all of our high school staff have taken the MCA practoring, um, done the work that they need to, to be able to practice those tests. Um, just a couple of thanks. Uh, thanks to Dave and his crew because this last month has been kind of nuts with, um, snow, but the building is still, um, you know, clean and things are running really well and we haven't had any major leaks. Somebody knocked on wood somewhere, um, from all of that. And, um, also, uh, the final thing that we're working on right now is we're working on next year's student schedules. Uh, we're looking at making some, uh, changes to the schedule next year, so, um, to try to take advantage of time and to get some things in that, that we can't do right now with the structure of our schedule. So making a little bit of a tweak to be able to take advantage of some time and offer some, um, intervention type offerings for all of our students, um, in 6th through 12th.
Community ed activities, Jake?
Yeah, a couple of things. A quick shout out to our weightlifting team. They hosted the Minnesota State Championships this weekend, um, with the bad weather and they made everything happen. So, um, our coaches, Scott Safe and Ted Alrick did an amazing job. They did all that setup themselves. They bring in their platforms and with the help of custodial crew, they also coordinated and moved all that snow in front of those bleachers out by Frank Cox Field. Um, there's a big pile of snow there and they moved all that snow and brought those bleachers in themselves and kind of set up and hauled them back out too. So, um, those guys are really passionate about weightlifting and it showed during that too and they made that happen and so is the state event. So it was really cool to see that happen here in Cannon Falls too. So thanks to those guys, they do a lot of great work. And there's some parents definitely that helped out with that too, so. Um, some fun alumni news, Ryan Epps, I think is a graduate in '27. He's a state champion for us as a senior. He just won his second Division III national championship at Augsburg College. So, um, Ryan Epps, he's had a heck of a career. He's got two more years up there still too. So, uh, state championship, national championship, national championship. So he's doing great things at Augsburg. And then, um, our community ed on that side of things, we're looking at preschool for next year already, so we'll have our preschool registrations out, um, fairly soon. We're just looking at fees right now and just did a quick comparison and we're pretty good bargain for what we're charging tuition. So we're just looking to make sure that we're staying competitive and, um, offering a good product, but also at a good price point, so.
Dave, anything for us?
Well, really the focus for the last month, the least has been snow removal. It's been nonstop, so I can't thank the staff enough. They've been really working their tails off to keep those lots clear. They've done a great job. Um, a lot of this snow's been falling on the weekends, but we have so many activities, so many events, so many things going on. It's, it just doesn't stop. So it's been a seven day a week adventure. Uh, we were a little concerned about the weight on the roofs. Uh, we've been monitoring, um, you know, all, all the snow going on the roof. We've been trying to get off as much as we can. We kind of got lucky that last snowfall. It was a lot of rain, so it was, I thought it was going to be a lot worse. Uh, turned out to be pretty good, so very thankful for that. So I have a official request in for no more snow, so we should be good. Uh, otherwise, we did have a new hire, uh, with custodians. Uh, pretty happy about that. Just moved to Cannon Falls recently and he's an experienced custodian from Bloomington. So pretty happy about that. It's working out pretty well.
Spot in?
Cory jumping.
Beth, um, we gotta get our kids to school all the time. Not only do we have other interruptions, but we also have transportation issues all the time. Andy, we usually don't see you, but can you talk at all about your, your hassles during snow time?
Oh, it's looked pretty good. That, uh, usually the depth of the snow doesn't stop school buses. It's the, it's the ice. And usually it's not the ice on the tar roads because people think they look good and they're, you know, we should have school, but it's really, the problem is it's the gravel roads. They turn to clear ice and usually they don't have enough sand on them to keep them totally safe. So that's kind of the deciding factor is, is not as much as how much snow is, is visibility and how slippery the gravel roads are. Cause over half of our, every one of our routes, half of its whole route is done on a gravel road. And that's another reason you'll see that the buses in two days, we can wash them and they'll just be ruined again is because they each travel, uh, 30, 30 to 40 miles every single day on a gravel road. So, but no, it's been alright. It's been good.
Yeah. It's important. Yeah?
Um, you know, I knew everyone was going to be updating on everything else. I decided to give you a legislative update. Um, the first topic is snow day relief and we're going to be talking about that a little bit later today. Uh, the governor is coming through and legislate. We, we knew something was going to happen, but we still were quite unsure what they were going to do with those days. Still some things to come forward. It hasn't been finalized yet, but when the vote goes 61-2 on one side of things, you can almost guarantee that that'll be going through. So a lot of districts are getting some relief this year as far as makeup days and, and we'll be talking about that later. There's some equalization aid, um, on here, but the big one that I wanted to go back to is the early learning bills on the back page. Um, another bill is moving forward to the House legislation that will require anyone teaching school, um, in an early learning program to be licensed. Um, for us right now, Jake has got all licensed teachers. Uh, we put them on the teacher contract, all those things. But just know if we were in a bind and the teaching shortage is coming here, this is significant. Um, this could pull teachers that we need for kindergarten and first grade and those early grades. So we'll see where that one goes. I know a lot of districts are, um, and, and we could actually get into that situation too down the road, um, but hopefully that doesn't happen. And then the last one, um, something I'm actually really against because they can't figure out a, a good way to do it is rating schools again. You know, giving them a four star, five star. Well, the qualifications for that are, are crazy. You know, it's just impossible to do. Um, our students do really well here across the board. Should we automatically get a five star school, uh, versus a school that, you know, is struggling and doing some great things and, and being innovative and thinking outside the box, all those things. I think rating any schools on certain things can be a little bit dangerous, but that is, that is back in things. Um, I continue to go, I think the next time I go up to the Capitol is on the 26th. The things we're mainly fighting for are just no more unfunded mandates. You know, we all believe in dyslexia, training for teachers, but when you mandate those things and have a certain amount of things that need to be done throughout the year, it's expensive. And who are the people that can do those trainings? Those kinds of things? Um, so we're really talking a lot about that. And then I will testify one more time and maybe Sharon's got that date. It's later in March, um, about the cross subsidies and what that's doing for districts. So currently we're still at $424,000, you know, that, that isn't being funded through special education. So, um, this is just kind of a legislative update. Um, really important that we stay on top of these things and don't let these little bills that all of a sudden just pop up. Um, it's really important that all superintendents across the state are watching these things very closely. If you want to see an update, um, I think your organization sends you this too. It's like a bill update. Not that you ever need to read it, but if you ever want to reference it when I send something to you in an email, um, this kind of lets you know where things are at the end of the day. I check this every day because if something changes, then we can write our legislators. But my organization sends it out, I think yours does as well. So that's all I have, just kind of boring stuff, but, um, really important things to watch.
Very early in their conversation, when there's, when there's, um, talk about what the legislature is going to give schools, there's also talk about the cross subsidy and the possibly extra money for that. Um, but it's been so political in such a long time, you almost have a tendency to check out and say it's not going to happen. Is there anything different in that conversation?
No, I, I think if they could just fund what they say they're going to fund and why they don't fund it, I think would be, that's the first topic. Uh, the next topic is restarting over the formula completely and relooking at that. Uh, looking at federal mandates versus state mandates. Minnesota goes above and beyond to make sure our kids are getting the best education they can and that's great. But Sharon can attest to this too. When you do that, you're adding on more compliance things and it's just adding on a lot of cross subsidy things. So I think if they could even fund 50% of special education or get us to that point, that would help. Um, the problem is, is when you fix the general fund, say you're going to give a school 2% and 2% and your cost of it goes up, that doesn't help. The other things that they're talking about is doing a gas tax. Well, the minute you do a gas tax, Andy is going to fill that tank down there and, and we all know what that's going to do to diesel. So even though you're giving schools more and then taxing certain things, it doesn't balance out well. So there's still a lot of work and the governor has not, he's given his main budget, but it hasn't really been talked about much yet, so.
Do you feel like the governor being an educator himself is, is an advocate?
Sure.
I mean, a deep advocate for us?
Yeah, and I think he works really well with Ed Minnesota, which I think is a really nice thing too. Um, getting those conversations going and those groups talking will be really nice. So yeah, I think it helps. It's just how you're going to get it done. It's one thing to say you're going to do it and then how you're going to do that, you know? We're losing teachers left and right. I mean, we have got to figure out a way to keep educators in the classroom. We got to figure out ways that they don't pick other careers. You know, we've got a shortage of teachers, some things like Mark Walter's position, those kinds of things, you know? Those, those are really hard teachers to find. So those are just, those are, all those things are good to have someone that understands it, but getting it done and saying you're going to get it, how you're going to get it done is interesting. We shall see.
Any questions for Beth? Moving on to new business. We have no old business there, so moving on to new. Uh, consideration to approve the medical leave request from 3/13 to 5/13 of 19.
So I know it's out here. Um, we have a teacher, 3/13 is coming really quickly. Uh, she'll be leaving on maternity leave. Uh, we do have a sub for her lined up. Um, so it is her request to be gone from 3/13 to 5/13 and my recommendation is to approve this.
This follows all of our contractual obligations?
It sure does. Yep, absolutely.
Look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion by Katie. Second by Mike, to approve the medical leave with that two month period as shown. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve a long-term subcontract for the same issue.
Um, this is the sub. This is Karen Adele. She'll be subbing in this classroom. The important thing, especially for the new folks to remember is anytime we know that a teacher is going to be on a contract for more than 30 days, we do put them on the teacher's contract. That pulls them off of TOC. We don't get penalized for that, but they go on to the teacher's contract. So that's why you're approving that tonight. And my recommendation is to approve this.
Okay. Look for a motion. Motion to approve. Mike, on the motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve a one-year extension 2019 to 2020 for the SafeLink transportation contract.
Right, um, I actually requested this. One of the goals you've had for me this year is to look at all avenues, in kitchen transportation, should we do contracted services, should we not? When I started looking at things with transportation, because of the way we do it, it's hard to get bids. It's hard to get people to want to do just the personnel portion of things. And so my recommendation to you would be to extend what you have for one year, get your new superintendent onboard and, and see where they want to go. Both Mike and Anna attended our last transportation meeting, um, that was just more of a personnel, um, meeting. It wasn't the whole group and they agreed with that. They could probably add to that. But we all thought it was a really good idea to just extend the current contract, get your new superintendent onboard, see, you know, what they want to do with things. Uh, we did, the only change in here is the top line that says this will be a one-year's driver's contract. We also added in 2% for the drivers, uh, to stay competitive with our local, um, drivers in the area. There are no other changes in this contract. So my recommendation would be to do a one-year extension, um, until your new superintendent is onboard.
Anna, anything to add?
I agree.
What it is? Yep. Nothing to add? Not, not this to the contract, but I have nothing to add. In fact, I'll make a motion to, to accept the contract. Okay, motion by Mike, to accept a one-year extension for SafeLink.
A second.
Second by Katie. Any other discussion?
So when was the contract supposed to end?
That's a great question. It would have ended, uh, June 30th of this, of this year. It had been originally a two-year contract with the option to extend for another year. Um, and so now we'll do this one extension. Um, and in the next contract, the mechanic, uh, with the option to extend that for a year as well, uh, because the mechanic is someone you always kind of need.
Right. So how, how did the financial part of this come to be with the extension?
Um, well, really easy because we build in the 2% and 2%. So on all.
That was known upfront?
Yep. And it's very consistent. You'll see in the contract, you'll see last year's and the years before, we've just always built that in. There's changes we would like to see, there's changes Andy would like to see, but I still think that would be better to have the transportation committee come together with the new superintendent to do that.
Yeah, I was just wondering if by not doing the extension, do we lose some bargaining chip on the contract?
I don't think so on this one. Josh could allude to it too, but I don't see any, anything negative in that way. If anything, it's a positive. Cause if we were to sit down and negotiate that, that might be quite a bit more. We, our drivers are still under the other drivers in the area. So 2% is something that Andy agreed to, but he may have to compensate them. He already does. He, uh, has to do bonuses to basically keep, um, drivers on. We don't necessarily pay for that. Andy pays that out of his profits. So, um, you know, if anything, I don't want to say this about Andy, we probably negotiated quite well on our side of things.
Good.
Sorry, Andy. Thank you for all that you do, by the way. We really do appreciate it.
So we have a motion to second on the floor. Anyone else have anything to add? All in favor of the approval of the one-year extension, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, consideration to approve the 2019 Fleet Services contract with an option of 2021.
Okay, this one is again exactly unlike it was. It would be a one-year extension with the option to extend for one year, um, just so that we don't have a mechanic that wants to leave us, thinks he's going to be without a job or something like that. But nothing else in here, um, has changed. Not even salary on that. Did we, we didn't change salary on there?
2%.
2%, we did. 0%, if you extend for that optional year, it would be 0%, but if you extend for next year, um, it's 2% on that. So my recommendation on this as well, and I believe the transportation committee agrees to go ahead with this as well.
For motion to approve then?
So moved.
Motion by Anna. Second. Mike? Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to increase the middle school, high school band position from .73 to 1.0 full-time with removing the auditorium coordinator stipend for 1920.
Right, I, I think much of us remember from a few years ago how sad this was when our numbers in band had decreased and our numbers have just continued to grow. And I, we're very, very happy with the program. Um, with that, it's become kind of a scheduling because of the additional kids, additional lessons, all of those things. It would be our recommendation tonight to take it from a .73 to a 1.0. To make that work on the finance side of things, we're going to take back the auditorium stipend, um, which allows us to open up that, that position a little bit. It gives some flexibility, fifth grade band especially. Uh, the principals always have to kind of very specifically plug in fifth grade because they have to go down to the elementary to do that. So this also gives some flexibility. We were close to doing this last year, um, just didn't have the numbers there. Our bands are continuing to, to grow and they've recruited quite a few, so we're really pleased with the band program. And tonight you can go down at 7:00 and watch them.
What are the numbers now compared to what it was back in, like three or four years ago?
Well, when it was four years ago, we're higher than we were then. Um, they just did registration. I don't know if you have the latest, latest and greatest.
We're down a little bit next year from what we are this year, but I think this year we started the year with 82 students in high school band. And in fact, at the end of the year last year, we, we were wrestling with, do we go back to offering two high school bands? But, um, you know, given the fact that students have the opportunity to drop band, you know, into the fall even, um, we thought that might not be a good idea because the numbers were such that if we split into two bands, if you have a handful of kids that dropped, we'd, we'd be back to that. How do you, how do you do two bands when you don't have any tubas or any trumpets, you know? But numbers are, are up significantly from what they were about four or five years ago.
I have a question. Who, then, um, who will have responsibility for the auditorium?
That's a great question, Brenda. I'm glad you're asking that. We're going to incorporate that into the 1.0. Peter Duggan will still do that. What's nice about that is it's not a consistently needed every single day. Um, on the days where he is teaching or something is needed, we do have Emery that can step in and do that. He's an hourly employee. Usually Jake is the one that calls him. Uh, Dave, you've called him a couple of times too for specific things that are needed, but, um, this will remain on Peter Duggan's plate. So that's, when I say that's cost, we want to get it as cost neutral as we can, uh, we remove that stipend instead. And Peter is aware of that.
I'd like to make a motion.
I bet you do.
And the answer for it.
You're making a motion as shown?
Yes, as shown.
Okay. Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion?
We had a, a little turmoil in our early years with the auditorium and the coordination of everything and, um, Emery seemed to have resolved that, I think at some level, or the coordination of everyone. Emery's still our employee and works when needed.
Emery is hourly though. I mean, it really is things that Peter has done. Um, he's really done a decent job with that. Emery basically steps in wherever we need him. He also drives bus, he subs, he comes in, he's, he, he is the most versatile person I've ever met in my life. He would do just about anything for the district. Um, he lives close, so he comes over very quickly if we need something. Uh, but I do think Peter deserves some credit here. He has really kind of brought the whole kind of how we do things. Um, none of us really knew what people meant when they said, "We need this." You know, Jake and I would look at each other like, "I don't even know what they're talking about." And Peter and Emery kind of always knew the lingo, so that's been helpful.
I think it's just been nice to have a single point person.
A point person.
I think that's been the critical part of this. Between me and Dave, we kind of struggled on which way to go with requests, so having that point person has been, um, real nice. I mean, I think that's key. having that point person has been real nice. I mean, I think that's key.
My question, I guess, as far as the substitute with Emery, is there enough lead time for Peter to understand that he needs to get him, or is this going to be a last minute?
No, they're typically, they register, I mean, things, they come to Jake months in advance. Typically, we know all these.
There's enough scheduling time.
Yep, right. Peter usually looks at the schedule a couple of weeks ahead of time and asks who the contact person is for this event or that event coming up. Most of that stuff's even after hours too, so they just find a way to make it work.
We do have a motion to second on the floor. All in favor of the motion as shown, moving up to a point from point seven three to one point oh. Say aye. Opposed? Carrie? Consideration to switch the following eighteen, nineteen calendar days.
Well, this is going to be a fun topic, and maybe you already know what you want to do. I'm not sure. February twentieth was a snow day. We needed a teacher workshop day. So as your LEA, I can make those decisions kind of on the fly when we know we've got something really close by to switch, and that's what we did. I obviously did notify you, that's already happened. We switched that. I didn't get any complaints. If you did, please make sure I know that. I think people thought that made logical sense. Teachers need a workshop day. And thank you to the teachers for, because it really wasn't the end of their quarter. So for them to have to, they still had to do grades later. So it was more work for the teachers, but I met with the ed, our minister, our EA, and they thought it was a good idea as well. So we switched those. The decision that you really need to make tonight is the snow day from the twenty-fifth and having school on April twenty-second. With the new legislation that's come through, that's your Monday after Easter. I've already told people, hey, we might have to pull that day back. There's a, a strong chance of that be prepared for that. Because I don't want people not knowing that that's a possibility. So that is out there. But with the new information that's coming down through the new bill, you could still have that day off if you wanted. The question for Jennifer and Tim is, does that day fall before or after testing in your buildings?
What's the day?
April twenty-second, the day after Easter.
That's the middle, but our testing schedule was planned without that to begin with.
So it really is up to the board. You know, I can give you a recommendation. But I, I don't think it matters which way you go on this one. They've kind of given you some legislation that you can say, hey, you know, we want to make sure our family has a Friday and a Monday. Or you may be in the, the group that says, you know, it's one extra day of testing or, you know, work that we could get done with our kids. I'm not a big fan of adding June days. Again, you, you get to come out and do that at the end. If you don't like the decisions I've made as your LEA through the school year, you can add days on. Those days are not good for kids. They're not good for teachers. They're not good for the custodial crew that wants to get things done. But you do have the right as a board to do that. This Monday, you could leave the calendar the way you had it. Have a Friday and a Monday off. Or you could recoup that day if you wanted, knowing that it's in the middle of testing, so I don't know if it's, if it's good or bad. I'm not helping you a whole lot here, but you do have a lot of leeway on this one.
How many days are they, are they looking to give us back?
For sure, the three. Rochester's already put out that they're, they're not making up any of them. And most districts are just saying that, because what are, what are they going to do this year? There, there's nothing they can, they can't give you a consequence.
So it would still allow us, we would still be allowed if, if we had some more, I mean, who knows? We could have snow day in May. So, but we would still have two more days.
You have to have one hundred and sixty-five days. We have about fourteen extra minutes a day that add on. If you wanted to get down to the minutes, we are more than fine.
We're good.
It really comes down to, we want our kids to learn. We want them here.
Absolutely.
You know, it'd be interesting to see what this does to test scores and, and what it does, because our teachers are really having to really, you know, not, what if every kid isn't ready to move on to the next lesson? They're moving on because we have to get this ready. So, you're right, we could have more days in May, but this is the one year I would not be worried about it because I think they've just said, we give up here. This year, we're just going to kind of wash it.
What, what testing are we talking about? So what days, what days is that?
Well, it's basically a month we kind of settle. I mean, we don't touch much in April. You know, there's not much room there, but there's two week blocks. Jennifer can send you that whole beautiful schedule if you want.
It's available on our website. It starts April fifteenth.
So, I, I'm just curious, so how does the twenty-second being in school or out of school affect the tests? It seems like we're kind of concerned about, about that day.
It's not on the testing schedule because we originally had it off. So no kids will be taking tests that day. But it could be a day that maybe teachers are prepping for the test or something like that. But remember, a lot of people may have plans already. I don't know. And maybe they're going to be gone anyway.
So whether we have school or not doesn't impact your testing? Because you've already planned on not having it that day, right?
Do most of the teachers plan to have all their MCA readiness done before the beginning of those tests, like before April fifteenth? Is that kind of the goal?
Sure, we try.
I, I mean, I mean, you wouldn't be necessarily using that day to.
There's other curriculum that's, that's covered in May and through the, right. But we tried to get what's necessary done before MCAs, yep.
Mr. Hodges, you had a comment, I thought.
I mean, it would impact math and, and science tests. It, it, it's one day. I would, I don't want to say that one day is, doesn't count, but one day is not going to make the difference district-wide between great scores and not great scores.
So something I'm confused, how would one day impact those tests, I guess? I'm still kind of confused on that.
So the reading test will end before the twenty-second. And so if we had school, then those students would be in their classes. If they're here and haven't already made plans, having an additional, you know, fifty minutes if, yep.
So I guess my concern is that it's already in the public beyond the school walls that this is what we're doing. And that's where I get a little uncomfortable because, you know, we haven't had this opportunity to discuss what we're doing. And yet the legislature hasn't decided what we're doing either. And so we're looking at the likelihood that it's going to pass, but yet we still don't know. So.
You do have time to table it. You sure could, if that's where you're going with that.
I mean, here we've got it, and we've got parents that might have plans. We've got families that might have plans tabled, and it doesn't do them any good. It just pushes it down the line. I mean, I guess I would lean toward keeping the day off, except for the winter we've had. If they've got a four-day weekend planned, we'll take it.
Well, it wasn't scheduled, scheduled as a day for prep or anything anyway in the calendar, so they wouldn't be losing anything other than not making up the day.
Yeah, I think as the EA with the board, the understanding really is, is going to be that we don't want to add on in June. I mean, I think everyone's probably in that agreement. I guess I personally would like to see it discussed here prior to going outside the walls of the school.
And you would have to host a, a special meeting, because those, those conversations need to happen right then. And even the, the regulations say the LEA makes those decisions. It, it's just hard to wait a full month, and some of these meetings have been used for superintendent search, so it's been an odd timing.
Yeah, it's been odd, and the number of them has been. So, I just wanted to put that on the table with, that there's really a mutual agreement that we're not interested in going into June, but we, we as, and with the administrators understanding that, that we're going to work through some of these workshops and potential dates.
Anna, does the student body have any?
We really don't want to make up any days.
That's a surprise.
Did you already, or your recommendation was to hold school on it?
I am not giving you a recommendation on this one. This is one of the very few items I'm not. Bill is correct. When I canceled the school day, I did put out that we would be having school on Monday to try to make up for this. So that's what he's referencing when he says outside the walls. I still think that's a good idea, so parents, if they haven't made plans, just kind of, you know, know that this is a very, very strong possibility. But at the bottom of it, I always say, based on school board recommendation, you know, and so you know, it's kind of tough. I'm really glad we did what we did for the teacher workshop day. That was really smart to just make that move right then. I went through a lot of steps internally to make sure that it wasn't just Beth doing that. This last one, I'm not giving you a recommendation. I really am leaving it up to you.
So you said we need one hundred and sixty-five days. How many days will we be, will we have?
We have an extra fourteen minutes a day that you can build in or something like that. And you've missed ten, if you include the tornado day. Your mayor did declare that an emergency day, so that will at the end be washed off. So you won't have to worry about that one. The e-learning days, the new bill that's in place is ten e-learning days instead of five. We used all five of ours, so those count. So of your ten, five of them are already gone. So you're, you are more than fine on days. If you get those three back, which it looks like you will, but you're right, it hasn't passed yet, so.
Bill's concern is more procedural than anything.
And it does get tricky for everyone, yeah.
So what are you feeling?
Well, the way it's written is school in session. So I would make a motion to not have school in session on the twenty-second.
So we've got a motion on the floor to not have school on the twenty-second and continue with the contract the way it's been. Hi, Lori.
Separate the two. It's a good idea.
Okay, so we need a motion that the, the March eighth.
So I'll make the motion that we have the February, February twentieth snow day taken by the March eighth.
Motion by Bill? Seconded by Katie? All that sound right? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carrie? Motion number two.
I'll make the motion that the February twenty-fifth snow day be considered a snow day and that we keep the calendar as is and have the day off on April twenty-second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carrie?
And I will make sure that that is on every single social media, email. We'll make sure the principals put it on both of their newsletters. And especially the elementary teachers with their peaks of the week, we'll, we'll get it out there. People will. The students will know the attention. Picks up her phone that they are not having school on the twenty-second, so. You did some good, Anna.
Okay, moving down. Consideration to approve the purchase of a truck for nineteen twenty using SSC co-op purchasing. This is a continuation of a conversation we had in November, maybe.
Yeah, it was brought to us in November. And it wasn't that I was against facilities getting that. It's just we can't build things into the budget mid-year. That isn't an item that we can just fluctuate thirty thousand dollars. So we go through SSC, which is co-op buying. That is the government rates. None of the, us could buy a truck at this price. Dave is here tonight for questions, but if you remember correctly, the one that we had bought, we're kind of hoping it makes it through the rest of the winter kind of thing. He got a great deal on it with a blade as well, so that's been really good to have. But it is, and was never designed. And even when Andy looked it over, we'll be lucky if we get two years out of it. We've gotten third, right? And that's, that's a great thing. But it is time to build that into the budget and is what we're ready to do if you agree. I believe the bid is on your packet, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. This is all through SSC. We don't have any say in it. If we did, and I'd just like to put this on the record, we would be going more local, you know, that kind of thing. But we, we can't do that. We have to go with the best bid through the government rate. So it is there. If you have any questions, I've asked Dave to be here tonight for that.
So historically, yeah, we have a pickup truck that's on borrowed time, and we knew that before the season started. We can make it go for another year, but we just don't know for how much longer. And if we continue this way, at some point in time, that pickup truck is going to break down. And it could be in the winter of one, the winter of one of our current winters, this one. And then we're kind of out of luck, if you will. So, for those of you who don't know or didn't, didn't understand, we've, we went in, we've left our contractual arrangement with snow removal, and we turned it over, and we've saved some fair coin doing that. And in exchange for doing that, we bought some nice equipment for the school to be used in a lot of other areas. And it's been a, a real plus for our district. But now we're faced with improving that equipment even once more, but again, we saved a lot of money. This could be the biggest savings we've ever had this winter, because if we were contractually using other people, I'm sure we could get close to six figures on that.
It would have been a big year.
It would have been a big year, yeah.
That's not over yet.
And I think it's, it's important if we, if we take people out of their regular jobs and move them out to the outdoors, that we at least make sure they got equipment that they can count on. So. Andy, did you have something?
I was just going to say we've spent two or three thousand dollars, I think, every year trying to keep this old truck running. So, it's, it's on borrowed time. There's stuff wrong with it right now, I mean. But it keeps trucking. But yeah, I mean, I think when we originally got it, it was only supposed to be for that one year, I think.
Yeah, I mean, technically it was about a thirty-five hundred dollar truck if we didn't get the blade with it, you know. So it, it's definitely served its purpose. And something else to remember is, last year we purchased a sander, which has really worked out great this year. That is permanently mounted in the back of the truck along with the fuel transfer tank to be able to have fuel on site while we're plowing in the middle of the night and that kind of stuff. These things are mounted in there. We ran into the situation with getting the bleachers in. That was kind of where our hands were tied too, because we have equipment permanently put into the back of this truck now, which is impeding our ability to do some of the things that Jake was talking about earlier as far as getting bleachers out and stuff, so we're expanding the fleet a little bit. We're doing some things that we, we need to. Sanding was something that was a big concern for a couple of years there. We've got that equipment. It's worked out fantastic. I mean, this year it's just been unbelievable to have that piece of equipment. We'd like to continue to use that piece of equipment, so we will plan on keeping the truck, but it'll have a different focus. It'll be primarily used for sanding and fuel and stuff like that, continuing to do what it does. And also having that emergency backup if we needed it. So it serves a couple of purposes, and I think we've done pretty well to this point. I just don't want to push our luck.
So the mounting in it isn't something that you could take it out of that truck and put it on this truck?
You, you could, but we wouldn't. We would, we would leave it right where it's at. It's, it's mounted in there. It was professionally done by the installation company. And we kind of like having the ability to be able to either tow or pull a trailer or move bleachers, or we utilize a truck daily.
To that equipment when this truck that's been on borrowed time says adios.
Well, that's, I'm going to worry about that when I, when I come to it. That, if we change the primary function of this truck, we're hoping to extend that life and have that discussion far down the road. That's what kind of the goal is.
Yeah, I agree with that, that. There's nothing harder on a truck than snowplow. That, that's, that's the hardest thing. So if we can get it off of that.
And he can get it on and just drive around.
Just drive around on that kind of use, then the truck probably will last a while.
Consideration to approve the purchase of a truck. Any other questions?
Where are we at within, like, funding for it? Like, do we have the money to do this?
What we did is we built it in. When the request came through last time, it wasn't that I was against it. It just, you can't bring in things mid-year. I mean, we build in. Right, we build in as much cushion as we can, but there's not much room for that. So this year, what we've done, instead of other purchases, we've pulled back and now we'll put this in. So I gave Josh the directive to build it into the budget. So it is there now. I feel a little more comfortable when we can plan for something. It's just, a thirty thousand dollar truck is not just a small hiccup. We have to plan for things like that, so. It is ready to go in your upcoming budget that you'll see.
I think it's a very smart plan to have in place, I think.
And note, you won't get it till July one. It's not like he can get it early.
I think it's very smart to do this and go ahead with it and just to have a, have multiple avenues for something. So you have your backup and you have one that you can use fully. And I just think it's just a smart way to go ahead with keeping our, just keep building on what we're doing. I would make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Katie to approve the purchase of this truck. Bill, on the second? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve the Cannon Valley Senior Citizens Center, Senior Center Facility Use and Rental Agreement.
Right. You've heard about this. We talked to Teresa, Jake and I have, who came up with some changes they wanted in the contract. So everything you'll see in there tonight is requested. They had some very small things, right Jake? You know, table usage and things like that. We agreed to all of that. The piece that you need to decide on tonight is the rent that you would like them to pay. We started out, they're supposed to be paying January first, and we're going to hold them to that. Reminder that our utilities are about eighteen thousand dollars a year down there. They've countered and come back with two hundred and fifty dollars a month, and that's what we're bringing back to you. You'll see in the contract, five hundred. I did meet with the mayor and the city administrator, because there's some confusion on what they get for rent or get for funds from the city. And I believe that's six thousand dollars. So that's where the number five hundred a month came from and the six thousand dollars a year for them to be housed there. So I don't really have a recommendation for you. I've done what you've asked me to do. I've met with the city people. Jake and I have met with Teresa, trying to kind of figure this out. We've granted every one of their wishes. We believe, right Jake? Everything they've needed, we've given them. We just need to figure out what we want to do. The true rent, if you were to figure out per room, per day, all of that, you're looking at close to a thousand dollars a month. So this one does not follow the procedures that you have in place for rentals. We believe that they are an integral part of what we do here at school. We feel that they're kind of a part of the school, all of those. We feel that they're kind of a part of the school, all of those things. We like, we like working with them, and that's why we decided to go in half and do five hundred. So, I don't know where you want to go with this. They, like I said, we're supposed to be paying January first. Their board has been working with the city as well. I don't know how those meetings have gone. Have you heard anything, Jake? And I know they were at the last city council meeting as well.
So, there was a, there was a commitment from the city at some point in time to.
Help fund a senior center, correct?
Yeah. And that was several, several hundred dollars a month?
We were supposed, six thousand a year.
Six thousand a year.
They just get it in one lump sum, I believe.
Okay. Now, in conversation with the city council member, they assumed that money to be going to the school is what he seemed to indicate to me. Was there ever a confusion about where the city's money was going?
I don't know for sure. We could ask for an audit for the Cannon Valley Senior Center. That might be the easiest way to see that. But I was told the same thing by the city officials, that they're giving that funds. They thought that that was going to help house them. They're great tenants. We like working with them, all of those things. We've put down pickleball lines for them, and we don't want them to have to find something else. It's a great, it's a great mesh for both of us. That's why it's not a thousand dollars a month. They're coming back with two fifty. Maybe you're okay with three thousand dollars a year. Maybe, maybe that's okay. I, I don't know how the board feels about this. I'm trying to follow the procedures that you have in place for rentals. We also give them a really good break on the auditorium. I believe a hundred dollars for their big concert. If you were to rent that in any other district, it would be a twenty-five hundred dollar rental. But again, that's their one and only big, big, big fundraiser for the year. And so, we feel like we just give it to them for that, and then custodial costs. So.
So, you say those utilities are costing eighteen thousand a year?
Yep. Josh put that all together. I'm sorry that was presented prior to coming on the board, but.
Is that, I'm just looking at this contract. Custodial services, that included in eighteen thousand?
No. It is just utilities only.
Snow removal, is that included in the eighteen thousand?
It does not.
Any repairs to the building?
It is absolutely not.
So.
It's a steal.
I mean, if we're talking, you know, triple or six-digit snow removal, what is it? I mean, what have we expended to remove snow from, from the CCC down there?
CCC is actually very minimal. We don't own a lot of the property that needs snow removal. It, it, it's really minimal to remove that snow, to be very honest with you. It's just a couple sidewalks. But everything else you mentioned, yeah, I mean, definitely adds up.
They do their own trash removal.
Correct. We do not, because of not having much space, we don't even have a dumpster over there.
So, that helps a lot too.
And the building is used for dance practice.
They would be our main tenant though, so to speak, wouldn't they? They're the biggest users of it. You know, what's difficult is in a lot of communities, the the city augments the Senior Citizens Center and sometimes provides them with a facility. I think we're fairly unique in that way. But if they weren't our tenant, it's just like the old barn. If you don't use it, it deteriorates in a hurry. So, by having people there, that would be a positive to us.
I would definitely agree with that. Having bodies in that building is a positive for the district.
Keeping those doors open, keeping air flowing on a daily basis is definitely good.
Has the senior center acknowledged that they are getting the six thousand dollars from the city?
They have.
Okay.
But they, they have other costs that they need to use it for, is what they've said. So, the main decision needed to know, our facilities has met and agreed to the five hundred. They've come forward to the counter of two fifty, which I am okay with, if the board is okay with it. I just don't, and again, this is only January one through July, because I don't know what your new superintendent will want to do with that too. This is just, you know.
I was gonna ask, what percentage of the building are they using with other groups?
The School of Dance has one little side room, and they only use it twice a week. And they have been very good tenants as well. They've laid down their own tile and done some painting and things like that. They've been very good tenants. Your dance team has a room in there that is not used much throughout the year, except during dance season. The gym is used maybe once a week.
Well, dance will use it daily during the season.
For like tournaments and things like that, but not, so CFYA uses it.
So, what do we charge those people when they come in? Like, what is, what does the School of Dance pay?
It's a great question. They pay twelve hundred dollars for the year. A hundred dollars a month. We get the check every, the first of every month. So, they pay a hundred, and they only use it very rarely. Like, the month of December, they didn't use it once. And we still got our check for a hundred dollars. They've been great tenants.
And they're, they're independent of the building. They're in the building, but they have their own personal restroom. They have no custodial, nothing. They're completely on their own. We don't really do anything for them.
That would be paying part of the utilities then, what we're charging them.
And we can see their monitor. I mean, it's very, very small. Like I said, they're a separate part of the.
Right. Do we charge CFYA?
Very much. Absolutely. Every time they use that gym.
Do you have any private groups that use that as well or rent from us?
We've had a couple people ask to have birthday parties in there, but when we tell them what it's gonna cost, you know, it's usually a hundred dollars to rent the gym. It's kind of, ah, no, we'll go to the city park, which I believe is twenty-five dollars to rent the park.
Jake, anything to add here?
No. Taekwondo uses the cafeteria a couple times a week, year round. Cannon Kids was down there a couple summers ago when we had the school project. So.
All renters. Do we charge Taekwondo?
Well, it's run through community ads, so they don't charge, so no, they don't pay rent. But there is a fee that we would tack on, community ad fee, so. Yeah. Just for kicks uses it all school year, uses a classroom as well.
So, Beth, you said this would only go through June thirtieth, but, but the contract says through.
You can, you can do it any way you, I mean, we're just trying to get this up and started. What we have thought, Jake and I and Teresa, is let's reevaluate after six months, January through July, and just see where things are at. They're good with this contract. This is the one they're okay with. It's just, I think we should reevaluate, because if you do two fifty, we need to make sure that we can afford to continue to do what we're doing, you know. My goal when I leave this district is not to have any negative spending happening. And this is one of the very few things that I can find that we are negative deficit spending in. You know, when you've got an eighteen thousand dollar bill, and I'm not bringing in anything other than the twelve hundred. It's, it's just my concern. And maybe the district wants to say, you know, we will eat that. We're okay with that, and that's fine, but it really needs to be your choice, not mine. Deficit spending isn't something you've directed me to do. So, I'm really proud this year that we aren't making cuts, and I think it's because we are making tough choices like this. We need to make sure that we're putting education first. Our seniors are so important to me. I'm the one that brought them in there. If everyone remembers that, I'm the one that recruited them to come in there. I thought that was a good place for them. It's just time to have those conversations, because we're not making cuts. We need to make sure we're making good choices. So.
How often are they using the facilities and what part of the facilities?
Every day.
Every day.
And they use three classrooms.
I think they're two.
Two classrooms and the kitchen.
And the gym.
And the gym for pickleball. We love them so much, we paid for the pickleball lines.
So, if you were to be charging them per room like you do the dance, it would be somewhere along the lines of a thousand a month? Is that what I'm?
I would have to do the calculations, but you know, they have more rooms than they're using the gym, so.
Right, but I mean.
It probably, I mean, they're using two, at least two classrooms. School of Dance has one.
Right.
Gym's a little bit more expensive.
Right. No, I know. I was just, you had mentioned, or is that just utilities? A thousand a month would cover utilities, and we're giving it's been for five hundred.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, when we looked at what things would cost, if you were to break down the rental of a classroom every day and renting the gym every day. What we did is we put, put the procedures in place, and then we figured it out. But you can't charge them a thousand dollars a month, you know.
Absolutely.
So, we decided to move forward with a recommendation of five hundred, because we felt good about that, even though it went against, you know, our recommendations or our procedures kind of thing.
Sure.
And so, when we gave it to the Cannon Valley Senior Center, they countered with two fifty a month. But I haven't seen their audit. I haven't seen their budget. I don't, I don't, maybe they really can't afford it. I don't know.
I think we should table it and see if we can get some more information before the next meeting about, like, like an audit or?
We've asked. I, Jake, do you think? I don't know if we'll get it.
So, what if we agree?
Or we countered.
Yeah. What if we go to two fifty through the end of June and then insist that we see an audit of their finances before, to, just to make sure? I mean.
I think the city might appreciate that too, because the city doesn't know where it's going.
Yeah. I mean, I would just kind of like.
That's concerning to me.
Because we are.
It was set aside for, for this purpose, and the city thinks the money is coming to the school, and it's not. I think that's something that we need more information on. And the other, the other question I have is, if we don't accept their counter and we say it's five hundred dollars a month, have they indicated that they're gonna go somewhere else?
They have. Teresa said they couldn't, they would have to go somewhere else. And the, the city has a part at City Hall that I know they talked about using down there as well, but doesn't have a gym, doesn't have a kitchen, you know, those kinds of things. So. I don't, we want them to be our tenants. We, we really, really like.
No question. Nobody wants to see them. Who?
No, no. It's just like, you know, it's that deficit spending kind of thing.
We at one time spoke about charging them the five hundred dollars and possibly getting some.
Volunteers?
Yes. Babysitters for our.
Love it. We've all.
Fieldhouse, because we get, we've got, we've got people moving around in that fieldhouse at all times, and especially during our indoor sporting events. And for a while, we were using them to do that. So, in lieu of that, we would pay them at least on paper.
Pay them. We would take it off of that. When Twyla was there, she was the coordinator of volunteers. If you knew who Twyla was, that's what she did. She coordinated kind of the volunteer work. What happens is, they would come up and they would wear these yellow vests, and they would, like in a wrestling match, they would go down to the fieldhouse and make sure kids weren't climbing on stuff. And they'd go over to Johnny in the corner and say, get down from the mats. You can't be climbing on the mats. And the kid would look at them and say, I don't have to listen to you. You're not a teacher. And so, it became not the easiest volunteering job. And the other thing we ran into is, if you're not feeling well and you're volunteering, you call someone saying, hey, I can't volunteer today. Well, it became a, okay, we were counting on you to take tickets or something that day, and then not feeling well. We all know when you volunteer for something, it's a little different than a job that you're getting paid for. So, we, I know Jake and I and all of us are more than fine with working that off. We, we think that's a great idea. I think they would have to get someone that coordinates that a little bit more again, and gets those volunteers in.
Really seemed like a win-win for us. And, you know, we can't, we can't, we can't turn this group out. We have to come to some conclusions with them. We don't, we want them to stay in that facility. It's good for us. It's just that we really can't afford the eighteen grand and getting little or nothing in return for it. But, you know, just from a practical standpoint, we should, I think we should continue negotiating or discussing it, because we don't want these bad feelings with them.
No, I agree.
I, I, I think the conversation that Dalton had about, you know, just putting out two fifty till the end of the.
So, January through July, do two fifty?
Well, that's what I would feel good about, but everybody's different here.
I'd like to know what the revenue is from these other groups. I mean, we can't say the holiday ten thousand should be covered by seniors, because we're.
Oh, absolutely. That's why it's six thousand. We're doing one-third, even though they're the majority. One-third is them, one-third is the school, you know, or two-thirds is the school.
So, we're really trying to recoup six thousand.
We're just trying to get a third of it. We're not.
Sounds like percentage-wise, the other groups are paying far more than the, the senior center.
Even when the Historical Society was using it as storage, their donation was significant, you know, because they stored their things there.
What would be the, the plus to us tabling this once more? What, what was the?
We have been working on it since July.
I think the idea of going from January through June at two fifty, yeah, we'd get some profit there or something in the process. But yet, now it's an uphill battle to get to five hundred where you think you should be at. But what is six thousand dollars, which we believe is coming from the city as part of their whole budget? They're also profiting. Their biggest fundraiser is held in our building that we're giving to them at a discount besides. So, on top of it, they're making money from us on their biggest fundraiser. So, I think we still need to stick it to five hundred dollars. That might, might go back to negotiate with them. And if the city is thinking that they're giving them six thousand dollars with the intention of it coming to the school for their rent or whatever that scenario is, I think that's something that those two need to figure out. Or they change their, their billing and it comes directly to the school.
And they haven't paid anything in rent up to this point, correct? In eight years, eight years.
So. How long has the six thousand dollars been going to Senior Center?
They haven't, they haven't paid rent at all?
Ever.
No, that's, that's the point of why Beth was running this.
I thought they were, I thought they were paying two hundred, two fifty.
No.
They, they haven't been paying anything.
No. And that's when I met with the city, they were confused on that too. I'm not gonna speak for them, because I don't know. I do know that the Senior Center presented at last week's city council meeting, so I'm not sure if anyone was able to catch that. I was unable to. I know you've had some conversations with the city as well. It was a good meeting. I think there's just some confusion on where it's going and what it's going for. We are the only school that I can find in the state, when I reached out to my Mesa group, that supports a, a senior center. And that is the city typically does that, not a school. And again, the only reason I bring it up, because I love, of all the things ever that I've loved, it's this organization. And, and what they've done for our school. I mean, they're book buddies, and they, they do so many great things. But we can't have deficit spending either. So, it puts me in a really bad spot, you know. I, my job is to keep everything neutral.
Well, it says down here, consideration to approve the rental agreement. We are not going to approve the rental agreement this evening, it sounds like. Do we turn this back over to Facilities?
I'm, we're, we've met on it so many times. I really do think you either need to vote on this, and this is, you, you've seen this rental agreement three times now. I mean, you do need to make a decision. And I, I don't care what the decision is, but my recommendation to you is, you gotta do something, because what are we taking it back to? Facilities has met. We've, we've beaten this thing. Dave, how many times has this, have we talked about this? Jake, five, six?
I don't understand. We're talking about a five hundred dollar rental agreement here, but if we would agree to that, that's a pretty one-sided conversation we're having here. So, we're agreeing to something that the other entity may say, no, not, can't do it. So, I don't understand that.
Right. And if they said they, I guess, I would like to see some sort of, like, reasoning from them, that they maybe, if they could come and, and ask, you know, if we could have that discussion with them and say, this is a, you know, this is what we need. Can you, can you show us why you can't? If you're getting this money, like, can you show us why you can't? Like, like you said, an audit or something, or can you show us why this is not affordable to you for use of that, all of that space? Because they wouldn't be able to do half of what they do in one room, like at the City Hall or something. Or to not have a gym. But you said you requested that information and they hadn't provided it, right?
Because there was a changeover. We went from Mr. Johnson is now Teresa Johnson. So, there has been some changing of hands. I believe their board has changed as well. You know, Dick's in the room. I think they've changed board chairmans as well. So. Again, I, I mean, really for us to ask any organization for their audit is not really appropriate.
Yeah.
Because I, I just think if we start negotiating too much with organizations too, what every group would want to come in and negotiate the rental agreement. You know, and Jake has got procedures that you have, you have told us to follow. And so, what if mat rats comes in and says, hey, you know, we do a lot. We bought all those new mats for the mat room, and so now we would like a lower rate. Well, then basketball comes in and says, you know, we bought the new nets, and just so you know, we would like a lower rate because we donated to the school. You see those donations every month. I think what you'd see is people start donating and like, oh, we can negotiate our, you know, and I just.
Oh, I understand.
I don't want to set you up to start a negotiations of sorts.
Yeah.
If we were to follow your procedures, it's a thousand dollars a month. We have already, as a facility group, decided to do five hundred.
Absolutely.
If you decide to do two fifty and accept their counter, that's great too. But whatever it is, I think you just, I don't think opening up for negotiations, more negotiations is probably good past precedent. You're setting up for the new administrator that's coming in.
And, and I, I agree with that. When we're already January, February, you know, two and a half months in, basically, how do we backdate this? And so, historically, they haven't paid rent in eight years, right? So, and is that on the school calendar that we're kind of looking at that for eight years? Do we finish this term on no rent and say, this is the contract? Do we finish this term on no rent and say, "This is the contract becoming July first?"
Yeah, the fiscal year?
Our fiscal year?
We started meeting in July, um, and, and did a lot of these meetings and stuff and that's why we had the goal of January. But yeah, I would be fine with that too. But I want you to understand why the goal of January, because we took July. We have been working really hard on this.
Right, that's, that's not what it's about is the idea like Bob was saying, well, they're not at the table here. This, this gives them the opportunity to say, "Okay, well, moving forward, this is what our intention is."
But they've been.
Effective July first.
They provided input on this.
Oh, very much. This has changed.
They've been at the table. They're not here right now, but they've been at the table to discuss this. The only thing that we're talking about is the monthly rent.
Yeah, they made like twelve changes, was it? Yeah, the contract's been changed a lot. The first time you saw it, it was much different.
It would be better to accept the two fifty through the end of the year than to take that down. So I guess I'd agree with what Mike said, you know, take it through the end of the year and then.
Through the end of the fiscal year.
Let them know they need to budget five hundred or for the next year.
So how, how often do they show up and, uh, do they ever come yearly and talk about the agreement to the full board?
This is the first agreement.
This is the first one.
So we haven't had an agreement that they pay zero?
Uh-uh.
No.
Most groups, nonprofits like that would just usually do a donation or something like that, you know? The Historical Society was a good example. We didn't know how long they'd be using our storage. They make a donation kind of thing. That you accept. The board always sees donations, so you see those.
It really, it really kind of expanded in the last couple of years, cause it used to be where the dance is, kinda separate, like Dave was talking about. And now they kinda moved into the, when that building was empty, they kinda moved into the main part of the building to occupy it and, you know, use the restroom and stuff like that, so. And then that's, that's when they started playing pickleball and they used to just walk in the gym, I think.
So, but another five oh one C three organization, if they wanted to rent that same space.
And the same hours.
Same hours. To be the thousand dollars.
Yeah, in that facility policy, there is a category for long-term contracts, which you guys can set the rate. So and this is kinda what we're doing here, bud.
Right, so we're using that line item to maybe five hundred dollars.
Right.
And just so you know, we do get calls on, what, people wanting to rent that facility. Um, one of them was a Montessori school. Um, I didn't wanna bring competition into the district, so I didn't bring that to you cause I didn't think that sounded like a good idea. Uh, but there was a group that wanted to start a Montessori school, uh, very similar to the one over in Northfield. It was Northfield. So we've had that. Um, we have had daycare options. People have wanted to, because of the gym and the way it's set up, uh, but once they found out our kitchen isn't certified, what's the right word?
Not to hold.
Not to code, you know, then daycare still aren't as interested, but that's something, you know, maybe you wanna invest in the kitchen and. But, um, to say no one has been interested in the rental of that would be not true. It, you know, it is, it is a nice facility for something, so.
Okay, what would your pleasure be?
And also just pointing out that the dates that are on this are April first through December thirty first. It doesn't say anything about going back to January, so we would need to.
Jake, did you change that then?
Adjusted it.
I don't recall.
Okay. Yeah, that will have to be changed. Good catch-up. We've changed it so many times now. Yeah, Jake put that on there, but we, that's an easy change, right?
So we can continue with the five hundred dollars that's currently in the rental agreement. We can amend that to two fifty and run it until the end of the fiscal year, which would be, what, July one, June thirtieth?
June thirtieth.
And, and possibly give us more time for more complete conversation. You, we haven't sat down and talked to these people as a group. There was no need to. They're getting the facility at relatively low cost or none, so. Tell me what you'd like to do and we'll, uh, we'll motion it.
I'd like to amend the agreement to two hundred and fifty dollars a month. Retroactive back to January one and have it run through the end of our fiscal year, uh, June third. With the understanding that it may stay at two fifty for the rest of the year or it may go to five hundred or who knows? But just make sure that there is no guarantee in that, in this deal that it, that it continues beyond June third.
Okay, Mike, I've got that amendment. And you made that motion on the amendment, right?
So the dates are amended and the price amount is.
Jan one to June thirtieth.
And retro.
At two fifty.
A second.
Brenda, on the second. Other discussion. So there's a motion on the floor and the second for the contract to be amended to two hundred and fifty dollars, retro back to January one to the June thirtieth date with, uh, subsequent conversation after June thirtieth. Who knows where that'll take us? I think the conversation would have to start before June.
Yeah.
I'm thinking.
Really? I think that'd be a great thing for the new superintendent to do. I'm teasing. We'll make sure that we continue. We have met with them several times and we'll do that again.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second on the floor for the two fifty? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So that would pass, I believe, by a four-two vote with Anna and Bill saying no. Okay? Moving down, consideration to approve the fiscal year nineteen revised budget.
So I've got a real, uh, basic summary for you. As you know, um, the UFRS coding system we use for budgeting and all of our finances is a seventeen-digit code and there's about seventy-five pages, uh, that goes into filtering all the way down into our, uh, funds here. Uh, the majority of what we do in the district is in the general fund and we spend most time on that. Uh, that'd be the very top line, uh, general fund. Uh, about seventy-five percent of what we do in the district is in the general fund. And when we talk about staying out of statutory operating debt or what is our, uh, fund balance percent in terms of expenditures, that's really what we're looking at is general fund and, and, uh, the dollars that we do to operate the building, to operate the staff, uh, and do our day-to-day operations. So, um, when you look at the very top here, uh, you look at a difference or of revenue over expenditures, about eighty-three thousand dollars in this revised budget. And when we're talking about revision of this budget now, uh, you originally adopted it in May of twenty eighteen. So lots of things have changed in terms of funding formula, uh, pupil units, uh, what we've gone into either, uh, some extra expenditures. For instance, the, um, storm damage, we have a lot of extra increased costs there that we build into the budget as well as some offset with insurance, uh, revenue. But there are a lot of things that changed in those ten months to get into this revised budget. Essentially, we're looking at the end as our, uh, projected audit total. And about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, assuming that the budget hits exactly where we have it figured out here with, uh, expenditures revenues, you're at about six point eight nine percent, uh, of your total fund balance. Uh, when we talk in terms of audit, uh, what they would like to see generally is, uh, two months, which would be about sixteen percent fund balance. Uh, at roughly seven percent, you're looking at just under one month's worth of, uh, say cash flow to fund your operations for, uh, the school district. Well, when we put it in those terms, it seems like we're in a dire position. Uh, six to eight percent is where we've been operating for the last, as long as we've been doing this together. Uh, it's not something that certainly would be ideal, uh, but it's something that we've been able to operate and be comfortable with, uh, as we've gone through, um, the years together, building the budget and going through expenditures. Uh, we'll go back a little bit maybe to the general fund. If you have some questions, I know, just kinda go through the rest of the funds here. Food service, uh, we're looking at, uh, expenditures over revenues, uh, real close to balancing out to our budget. Uh, essentially, you're looking at not trying to, uh, be a big money earner in food service. You certainly don't want to be charging too much where, uh, you're making a huge profit in food service, but you definitely wanna make sure that, uh, we're taking care of, uh, our needs. By the, the projected total, we only have about four thousand dollars in our food service. Uh, we're not looking at having a, uh, excessive fund balance in that area. Uh, it's really not allowing, uh, for replacement of equipment, um, or big needs that may fall. You know, a dishwasher could run us anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars if we were to come into that, uh, position. Although we're looking at, we're not having to raise prices and we're at a spot where, uh, we actually do have revenues over expenditures. Uh, so maybe not the best of situations for food service, but it is a spot where we're not having to, uh, make a transfer from the general fund to cover food service expenditures. Uh, community service, uh, same, sort of similar situation there where, uh, we're looking at, uh, again, trying to make sure that we're running programs efficiently. Uh, canon kids would be a major part of that, preschool would be a major part of that, summer rec, uh, those sorts of things. Class offerings, uh, and making sure we're trying to stay as much as we can cost-neutral. Uh, the reason you'll see some deficit spending in community services this year is, uh, we've added, uh, the preschool teaching staff is now on the teachers' contracts, so there's some expense, uh, related to that. Uh, we'll have to press it down with finance committee and, uh, probably with me and Beth and Jake just kinda talk about what we wanna do with, uh, those salaries going forward. If we wanna keep it all community ed, uh, or transfer some of that to the, the general fund. Construction, right now, we don't have anything going on with building. We don't have a bond out. We're not building any projects. Uh, that fund is at zero. Debt service, that's the second biggest fund in what we do in our district. And you can consider really debt services as our mortgage payment. It's a payment of the debt service for auditorium, a fieldhouse and improvements that were made in the district with the long-term facilities maintenance project. To see, uh, deficit spending there is an okay thing. Uh, we consider how the mechanism is for funding debt service. Uh, when the levy goes out, it's set to recoup a hundred and five percent of, uh, the debt. Uh, so over time, you end up building a little bit of a debt excess in your funds and the state will kinda do, uh, a little bit of takeback or balancing out on that. So, uh, while it does show a deficit spend in our debt service, we're set to pay our, uh, obligations and we're okay there. And you'll see a projected audit, uh, balance of about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars at the end of the fiscal year for debt service. Uh, the next one is trust and agency and that's your, you consider that your scholarship fund. Uh, generally things that are in the, uh, other funds at the end of the year, they kinda go into the general fund, uh, sort of balance. And a trust and agency, we're able to, uh, have balances and scholarships that can stay, uh, from year to year. So, uh, say you have a donor that gives X number of dollars, uh, to be specifically earmarked for scholarships or for field improvement, whatever it may be. And the trust and agency at the end of the fiscal year, that stays in that fund and is designated specifically for those uses. So in your trust and agency, you'll see, uh, while there is a spend down in there, uh, because not all scholarships, uh, earn enough interest to keep going and self-suffice, um, generally what you'll see in there is, uh, a pretty, uh, balance of around about a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we usually had in our, in our trust and agency. The next two funds go hand in hand and tie together. And, uh, coming up real soon, you'll see these kinda wipe out, uh, from our district and, uh, be tied into, uh, our general levy. Uh, the OPEB trust is a fund we did almost ten years ago. Uh, we were able to go out for a one million dollar bond to help offset some of the costs of our other post-employment benefits. And, uh, so the OPEB trust was set up, uh, and designed for us to, uh, help cover up some of the retiree benefit costs that we have, uh, in our district. Uh, essentially, we draw about one hundred thousand dollars a year out of that million dollar, uh, bond that we had raised, uh, to help offset some of those retiree costs. Uh, the hope was to get it to last all ten years as it took that for us to pay off the debt service on that. Uh, so the OPEB debt service you'll see there is the mortgage payment, for lack of a better phrase, uh, on that OPEB debt. As we get down to the end of that OPEB trust, uh, what we've got worked out in our last negotiation was, uh, a sunset clause to help, uh, that we can levy for some OPEB retirement, retirement benefits, uh, when we do our levy. Uh, so some of that cost is gonna be recouped in our levy as we, as this drops off. So that's a good benefit in our negotiations. Um, and in the next couple fiscal years, you'll see that OPEB trust and the OPEB trust, uh, debt service fall off. So kinda what you've got there is just a one-page summary that really summarizes, it boils everything down into just, uh, one page. Here are the funds. Uh, the middle part of that document is, uh, the initial budget that you approved in May of two thousand and eighteen. Um, and then the bottom just kinda shows you a summary of what the changes are in total dollar amounts for funds. Um, like I said, it really gets to be a long, uh, process, about seventy-five pages of seventeen-digit codes to tie all this stuff together. Um, so this really does boil it down into its most simple form of the fund. So, uh, what I guess I would like, if you guys have any questions on the overall part of it, I can certainly answer whatever you have now. And if there were anything that you have in specific, whether it be a program or an area, uh, that you really wanted to, to dig in, uh, you know, go ahead and, we can kinda go through that maybe in my office at some point. But if you have any questions tonight, I can certainly ask, answer what you have.
So the two months that we, that you alluded to in the beginning, that's.
Yeah, so.
It's a recommendation.
Yep.
But yet, we don't know very many schools that have that type of fund.
No, it's, especially in the district our size, it's pretty common to be around at, uh, six to twelve. Uh, and it's a number that we've been operating at very, I won't say comfortably because you're always, you know, on the edge of, uh, to be able, are we able to get a plow truck? Are we able to fix a roof, you know, when it happens, those sorts of, of things, uh, big-ticket items? Um, you know, are we able to offer all the classes or add an instructor or whatnot? Uh, when you're only operating at six percent, that's a difficult thing to, to, to do. You don't have a whole lot of funds to sort of play with. I mean, uh, we were in the days of sixteen and eighteen percent fund balances. Then you have a little bit more leeway to kind of, uh, you know, make sure that things are tip-top or, uh, needs are being replaced on a third-time, time schedule. Um, at the sixty-eight percent, which we've been operating at for, uh, the last number of years, um, it just forces us to really do a good job in our offices and then throughout the district and the program directors of, of making sure that we're not, uh, loosely spending funds that we're pretty, uh, stingy-type, frugal, whatever way you wanna put it. And we're, uh, we do a pretty good job of watching our pays, I think, throughout the district in all areas, I, I believe. Um, so, you know, is it ideal? No, but, uh, I think it's something we've been able to do pretty well.
I'm actually very proud of what we accomplished. You know, I mean, we do a nice job of keeping in that six to eight and a lot of districts would be thrilled to have that. So I think we, we do a nice job. I agree with Josh on all of that.
I think, I think that's true and it's a, it's a tribute to our, to our management because we're off, we're able to offer people so much, our kids get so much. And we could pull a lot off the table here and add to our fund balance by doing so, but it's uniqueness of Cannon Falls. And that's, that's what people understand when they're sitting at that table during the last couple sessions. They see that, so. Yeah, it does lend itself when you're talking about seven percent or slightly less. It does lend itself to causes of concern when you say we should have two months, but that's not a real number for any public school of our size. Questions?
So Josh, uh, using the, the top numbers, basically, we're, we're looking at a difference of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, but, uh, as far as the negative spending, correct?
Yeah, so you're looking at the total budget for the fiscal year?
For the fiscal year.
For rent, yep.
So, but in reality, you mentioned some salaries in community service, uh, coming, being put in there versus the general fund. So really, that sixty-one thousand isn't truly.
Yeah, absolutely. When you look at the overall, you know, negative spend of the whole entire budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, the OPEB trust, there's a hundred thousand dollar drawdown on that. Uh, so that makes up a big chunk of it.
Right.
You know, the community service, having the preschool salaries increased in there is a big, uh, part of that. So yeah, you, you look overall, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar drop. Um, but really, you have to kind of, that hundred thousand dollar OPEB draw, you take that off. So really fifty thousand dollar drop is what you're looking at total. And then, and sorry, uh, the other part of that is fifty-five thousand dollar deficit in the debt service. It really does kinda wash itself.
Right, so that. So as you really understand the numbers, it's not necessarily a bad number.
Correct.
Keep it in mind too, when you move preschool over, I mean, the, the governor prior and the governor now have really been pushing early childhood. When you've got teachers that are on a teaching contract and have to be teachers, you can get so much more of the scholarships and the voluntary pre-K and some of those things. So we've set ourselves up to be a district that can profit from offering really great pre-K programs. So there's some benefit there too.
If there's no other questions, I look for a motion. I would, so we'll fill on the motion.
A second.
Second by Katie. All in favor of the approval of the revised fiscal year nineteen budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Moving on, consideration to approve the assistant track coach.
This one missed it by a day last time. I'm really sorry about that. It, it, you don't have a consent agenda. So sorry. It's Natalie Rutt. Uh, Jake, you guys.
Jake, you got anything you want to say on it?
Yeah, not a new position, it was just the one that was left, it was to be determined on the last time we did coaches. Natalie's great, she's a teacher here, and she helped with the wrestling program this year, so she's going to help with the girls' track team.
I'll make a motion to approve Natalie for the assistant track coach.
Katie and Mike, barely. Mike on the second. Other discussion. All in favor of Natalie as the assistant track coach, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a retirement request at the end of eighteen ninety.
Yeah, this one is kind of hard, she's in the room, so we'll try not to get emotional, but Maureen Zabrowski has decided that she would like to retire. She came the same year I did, so we have been coworkers this entire time, so eighteen years. She also long-term subbed for a couple of years, so due to past practice, she qualifies for our retirement program. And I know that she's going to be back and sub, but I also know that she has taught just about everything. She was over in Randolph and taught special education and has brought those skills to the classroom. I was kind of in shock when she went from an upper grade to first grade, because as a fifth-grade teacher, that's not something normal people do, but she did it. She did it with complete grace. And every time you walk in her room, and I said this the day that I met with her, those kids are learning. And those kids know that they're cared about, and they know that they're loved, and there's a lot of structure in that room. So if you've got a child that needs those things, they walk in her room and she's teaching her butt off every day. So I guess I just really, really want to say to Maureen how thankful the district is for everything that she's given these kids, because they're very lucky to have her. And we're even more lucky that she'll come back and sub for us, because when they sub for our district and they already know the procedures and they know Phyllis and they know where to get the keys and they know where the bathroom is and all of those wonderful things.
There's a bathroom?
All of those things just benefit us, so with regret, but also my recommendation would be to approve her service for Cannon Falls and offer retirement for her.
I'll make a motion to approve her service and the retirement.
Motion by Brenda.
A second.
Second by Katie. Maureen, it's not often we get a retiring teacher to come in here on her evening, if you will, so thank you so much for everything that you've done.
I just wanted to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to teach in my hometown, it meant a lot, so thank you.
You're keeping your composure, but it's different.
I had the pleasure of working in her class, too, and you're going to be missed greatly, so thank you for your, all of your teachings.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor of the retirement request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to post and hire one oh FTE elementary teacher for nineteen twenty.
This one's logical, I need to replace Maureen, and that'll be a tough job to do, but we will hope to do that.
Make a motion to post and hire.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion?
I guess I'm going on conversation, I understood this afternoon, but procedurally, I want to be careful there as far as what's being discussed on the process, so.
Oh. I don't know if I know. I don't know what that means. You mean internal posts?
Internal posts.
Oh, we always, we always do that, because it takes, they have to walk around.
Are we following this?
Yep, I always internal post, I always wait till they get a okay from the person retiring. She wanted some time to talk to her friends and, or colleagues and things like that.
Just procedurally, I think we get a little ahead of the, again, kind of like the snow days. There are opportunities within the administration to understand who's going to fill and what potential you could do on internal posts.
So you don't want us to internal post?
Well, we just accepted a resignation, so no.
Okay.
Resignation, but an external post, is what you're saying?
Well, I think there's conversation already on that body being taken, so I think we have to be careful there.
Okay, at that, I would need help with that, because what you're approving is the external posting and adding that position. Okay.
What conversation?
Will you talk to, I mean, someone will talk to me then? Awesome, okay, because I don't know what I'm doing wrong.
We're not approving to hire a person right now, just to post the position.
I think what he's referencing is when we know that something's coming up, because we have to get it done by a certain date. By the time you leave each of them open for a week, it could bump around. So if someone from fifth grade takes a first grade, then you got to post fifth grade for a week, and then you got to, you know, do that. So I think that's what he's referencing. So we're trying to stay ahead of it, but I think I know where you're going there, okay, got it.
Okay. Taking that under advisement, but we'll, the consideration to post and hire, we've got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to post and hire one point oh FTE PE health teacher for nineteen twenty.
Okay, the reason why you did not see this on the night of the retirement is I was really hopeful that maybe this could be a reduction. Sometimes you just think, you know, like, okay, if we sat down and we re-looked at everything, could we move kids around and things like that? In tenth grade, for example, you have, you're required to give health, but not physical education, all of those things. After Tim went through extensive scheduling and what that would look like, it doesn't work. It would mean changing our complete philosophy on physical education. And I know that this board feels strongly about kids having PE every day in the elementary and those things. So at this point, we couldn't find the reduction that we were looking for, but I think, again, it just kind of shows that due diligence of trying. You know, we had to make sure we could look for that first. So the reason why you didn't see this on the night of the retirement was just that, we wanted to make sure we were dotting all the i's. So we have found that we will need that, so that's-
This high school or elementary?
It could be anything, the internal bumping, we'll see where it lands, that's why it doesn't say, it just says one point oh PE teacher.
Okay, I'll make a motion to her.
Motion by Brenda to approve the FTE PE health ed teacher.
I'm like, a second.
Katie on the second. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Getting down to the end, on Wednesday, we'll have a special board meeting where we'll put people in the seat one more time. And you can see the procedural things that go on. And after that, on March twenty-fifth, we've got a regular scheduled board meeting. You see the items on the agenda that we're going to deal with. If for some reason you want more items to be put on, you have more concerns, please talk to either Beth or Lori, and we'll see if we can get it on the agenda. Anyone else have something for the cause?
Just wanted to remind everyone about the, mark your calendars for the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation auction, it's April sixth, it'll be at Mill Street Tavern this year downtown.
On the sixth.
I think the deadline was Friday for donations, but maybe it might still be silver for it to-
I would bet they would take some.
They'll probably take, they'll probably take donations.
Yeah.
So our meeting is finished, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Katie, second. Second by Mike. Further discussion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.